Welcome, everybody, to the Forest Hill School District Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, June 22nd. Do you want to call a order?
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Here.
Dr. Resmussen?
Here.
Mrs. Stewart?
Here.
Mrs. Hostel?
Here.
Glad to be here, please everybody rise.
Sorry, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, this briefing, we have three entrances and exits to the area, there's one main entrance that we came in, there's one behind us, and one on the other side of those contrition steps there. And a motion to withdraw from the panel?
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
No.
Mrs. Hostel?
Yes.
3.1, approval of minutes for the special meeting on May 1st. Do I have a motion to adjutant 3.1, 3.6, 3.9?
I have a motion to adjutant 3.1, 3.6, 3.9.
I'll second.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen? Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostel?
Yes.
4.0, the procedures for public commentary. Remind you, the Board of Education is committed to conducting its meetings in a productive and efficient manner to assure that meeting is completed in a reasonable amount of time, while also recognizing the importance of chair and adequate opportunity for public input. In order to conduct in order to a fair representation of expression, the Board will provide a period of public participation for policy 0169.1 at every regular board meeting. Public participation will be a total of 30 minutes, each speaker will have 3 minutes time limit. If there are more than 10 speakers, individual time will be adjusted down to within 30 minutes. The Board does not discriminate based on the residual content of speech or viewpoint of the speaker. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, the time limit may be adjusted as the president's discretion. Speakers should be prepared to respond to questions some board members ask them to clarify. Okay, 5.0, candidates for graduation. Mr. Kyle Fender.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here, and thank you for the opportunity here to recognize one of our students at Anderson High School. I've been up here a few times through school year for students who have achieved their graduation requirements at a time different than the traditional graduation, so it's important to keep in mind that education is not a one-size-fits-all type of arena, and we're really proud of our graduates once they reach that mark, whenever they reach that mark. And for this young man, it really was, it's all mountain climb, we're very proud of him, and very proud of all of the staff members who put in their time, effort, and in often cases, extra effort along with will to accomplish this feat. And so with that in mind, the following student has completed all requirements for a diploma at Anderson High School. Will Hollis, paper. Superintendent recognizes approved grant for the high school diploma to Will Hollis. Before we, before we, I had an opportunity this summer, since the end of school, and actually through the last semester of school, to see Will in action in the central office every single day, hard at it, doing what he needs to repeat this very important document that you received tonight. So, it gave me an opportunity to see it up close, what our teachers do, and the time that is invested, and the work the students put into earning their diploma. So I personally want to congratulate Will, and wish him much success, and want to find young man, it was enjoyable getting to see him, and get to learn about him, and it was also very enjoyable today that he learned that he was going to get his diploma, our entire office staff showed up with him, and we had a sort of going out party, so congratulations, Will. And he wants a party, he had people going out. I'm not even excited, people just party. They're out of town, so he's not here tonight, I have him up here telling embarrassing stories, but he'll, when they get back into town, we'll do a nice little ceremony at the school, give him some work.
I'll make a motion to approve granting a high school diploma to Will Hollis, paper.
I'll second.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostel?
7.0, the first update from the superintendent.
I have good news, uh, season. First of all, Laura Holt Camps with us, who is over there, former Maddox teacher, and she is now the American Technology Teaching and Learning Specialist, and this meeting and all the efforts leading up to streaming and all the things that take place are prepared for her.
And there's no audio, but we're working on it.
If your sounds are blowing up, we, we're trying.
She knows. It's just not going to YouTube.
Okay. There's also a few other people I'd like to introduce tonight as part of the update agenda. But before I do so, I would like to thank again Anita Eschman and Nicole Ward, both fantastic administrators, dedicated administrators in our district, both have an opportunity to do some other exciting things in their career, and so I wish both of you the best, and thank you for your service to our students, to our teachers, families, and our community. So best of luck to both of you as you venture into your new opportunities. As said, it's also a pleasure for me to introduce a couple of administrators that are with us today, they're going to become part of the Forest Hill family in the upcoming school year, and so I'm excited to introduce those to you this evening. Mrs. Brennan, Tiffany Brennan is with us, Tiffany, you were waiting. Also, some interesting, Sean is Tiffany's wife, he is with us, I think, this evening, he is the baseball coach, largely baseball coach, over at Anderson, so it's nice that you're with us tonight to support your wife, well deserved. Mrs. Brennan joins Forest Hill's family after an impressive, and I do mean impressive, administrative career as middle school principal in both Oak Hills and Wyoming school districts. Most recently, she served as the curriculum director in West Claremont, where she was positioned to take over West Claremont's middle school as principal. She has a vested interest in our schools and our community, which is evidence to the fact that she has been a lifelong resident of Anderson Township and proud product of the Forest Hill School District, so welcome. Without a doubt, Mrs. Brennan is all-in for our students and our community. While we, our sad to see Mrs. Eschman leave the school district this summer, after a great career in Forest Hill, we are very excited to welcome Mrs. Brennan home, as I said before, as the principal of Mangle Middle School, so welcome. A pleasure for me to introduce everyone, Matt Haredia, his assistant principal, and he will be the assistant principal at Summit Elementary. Matt is coming out of this building, or he worked a lot in this room, coordinating efforts with teachers and students throughout the building. Mr. Haredia is transitioning from the innovation specialist role at Mangle Middle School to the new assistant principal at Summit Elementary, following Nicole Ward's departure. Prior to working at Mangle, Mr. Haredia taught at Wilson Elementary in both 3rd and 5th grades for several years. He also has teaching experience at Lincoln Woods, Mount Auburn International Academy, and Stephen Foster Elementary School. Mr. Haredia lives in Anderson Township with his wife, also a product of the Forest Hill School District, and their children. We're very excited to welcome Matt Haredia to our administrative team. Matt, I didn't see you where, oh, there you, okay, good to see you. Welcome. Two other updates that I have, and that, the first one is to remind everyone that our July board meeting will be on July 8th, that will take place at 7:30 a.m. in the morning, and that will take place in this room. The reason that happens at that time of the day is because it's generally a brief meeting, and is mostly about human resources, and ensuring that before a state requires July 10th contract date, that all of our employees are hired prior to that, because it just makes it a lot easier for transitioning from one school district to another, with all the paperwork and all the responsibilities associated with that. So most schools try to have a July, before July 10th date, to ensure that all the staff is in place for the upcoming school year, so that's why that meeting happens. It happens at 7:30 in the morning, because these individuals work for a living, and because they can get here and have the meeting take place, they can then get back to work and get that accomplished. It's also on Friday, and if we had it at 7:30 at night, most people would not enjoy that time period either, so we try to work around the meeting schedules to ensure that we can get all of our employees in place. So congratulations to all of those who are yet to be announced in this meeting. Also, a little bit later, last thing I have in the announcements is that we have a calendar of the school district, the 22, 23 calendar, with adjustments that were made, that will be discussed tonight and voted at the second calendar, in the 23, 24 school year, which we have heard agreed for that. So, Mr. Fellows, we'll update us on those, if there are specific questions based in that, then we'll answer that. Thank you.
We've got, 7.0, we have public commentary. We have 23. You guys signed up for public commentary, and I'm gonna name off, um, I don't know who, and if you can line up over by the podium, that would be great. First up, Tom and Hagadorn. Second up, Sharika Niyawalo. Claire Mangle. Lyndy DiMario. Jessica Cunningham. And Lacy Adams.
Was that 2 minutes?
We've got 3 minutes.
3 minutes?
Yes.
Great. There you go.
There you go.
Okay. I'll leave some time for other people. Oh, is that on?
Yeah, we can hear. If you get 3 minutes, every speaker will get 3 minutes, 1 minute, 1 and 1/2, 4, 3.
What we're doing, one, no way. Sorry. What did they just say they want to do? 3 times 3 is 90 minutes, it'd be a minute. I know, but I can't do, I need to have a 90-second. Now we're ready. Go right ahead, Mr. Hagadorn.
There you go. 1 minute, 30 minutes? That's a. Go ahead. We're ready.
You get a minute and a half.
Okay, so, I stand in complete support of the resolution that may be introduced later tonight. The draft that I've seen begins with, "Resolution to create a culture of kindness and equal opportunity." I urge support to vote for it for a basis. It's the right thing to do. Children's staff should never be divided into arbitrary groups, with some painted as oppressed, while others are blamed as oppressed, something the Forest Hill School District has clearly done. It hurts learning. We should never put barriers between children and teachers because of their identity. We should emphasize those things that they all have in common. It's unlawful. Attorney General Dave Doster said, quote, "Curriculum standards will be contrary to law, but can treat students differently on the basis of race." He signed the 14th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, the Ohio Constitution, and the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Finding is the will of the people. The residents elected the four for Forest Hill's candidates last November, and attending CRT was a huge issue. Candidates backed by the opposition to this resolution, lost. All four, lost. So please, don't let a small, loud minority literally overturn the results of last November's election. I urge passage of the resolution. Thank you.
Good evening. I stand in opposition of the previous speaker. The Forest Hill School District website states that it, quote, "provides innovative curriculum, high expectations, and total devotion to young people." Furthermore, its strategic vision states that the school district believes, quote, "that learning takes place when women are secure, valued, and able to take risks." The proposal under discussion today is in stark contrast to the strategic vision of the school district. The previous speaker was correct, but there are some elements there, I think, that we can discuss, but the aspects that deal with the question of identity, I think, is what's at the core of tonight's discussion. Erasing all forms of identity robs the students of who they are. We all have multiple identities, linguistic identities, national, ethnic, and so on. It's not possible to not have an identity at some time, so barring a teacher from mentioning an identity is an impossible task. This proposal is flawed in too many ways to enumerate in my short time this evening. It's been used as both a tool and not in the best interest of the students, faculty, and staff. Come out of the time. Thank you.
Could you please hold your applause, please, after a speaker, so we can get through all 23? I appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead, Claire, whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Claire Mangle, my trainer is a day mom. I was with a group of newly graduated seniors last night, and when I read this so-called kindness resolution, we were all thinking the same thing. Thank goodness, we don't have to come back in the fall. I am scared and sad for the students staying here, the kids I met at the 5-day Diversity Day booth, and my friends, I feel guilty about leaving. We have great schools, but your actions are crafting a district people of grateful to leave and embarrassed to say they graduated from.
After an engaging 2.5 hours, an opportunity to learn and process from experts, and then together, students were asked, "Is there any message you would like to share with the Forest Hill School Board?" It said what? The next several speakers will share their feedback for you. Here are the first few. Students shared experiences with Forest Hill's district in our discussion today, and what I learned from them was infuriating. The school district has never been as inclusive and welcoming as you would like to pretend it is. The cancellation of Diversity Day was only the one that got people's attention. You need to do better. Do better. Your students are imploring you to make the best possible decision for their well-being. Listen to them. Do your job, and what you were somehow elected to do, and fight for what the younger generation needs. Stop pushing your personal agenda and follow with the general audience of the school. I want them to know that they aren't turning us into good adults and getting us ready for the future. We're inevitably going to interact with different people of all types, and the lack of perspective that they are giving us is devastating. We want to grow and create change, and if that scares you, I want you to think on why. Diversity is a fact, not an opinion, and no one can avoid it. We need to embrace it in order to create a better world where everyone gets what they need to have good opportunities. Thank you.
We have a few more, few more names. Camilla Moore, please line up. Phil Guffin. Antonio Chiolino. Wendy Strickler. And Emily Mangle.
Here's an additional student response. Canceling Diversity Day is all political, and it's wrong that the board decided to make it that way, because it really isn't political. While I respect that the school board is trying to do the best by the students, try to do best by the students and the community, it has become clear that their methods are flawed. My biggest ask of the school board is to trust the teachers, trust the people who dedicated their professional lives to educating the student body. If teachers think learning about diversity is important, which they do, then the board should let them teach. If teachers want to play educational movies or read books in class, let them do it. Have some faith in the professional educators who allow Turpin to be the top 10 high school in the state of Ohio. Give us Diversity Day. Please see us and listen. The Forest Hill School Board should learn how to act like adults, and be able to talk about diversity without creating a problem. This should be enforced in Forest Hill schools for all grades, 7th and up, not just limited to juniors and seniors, as I, as I in the sophomore, had a great experience with my younger age. In November, you campaigned for going back to basics, letting teachers teach, and making education unpolitical. Do you genuinely believe you have succeeded in accomplishing this? During these past few weeks, there has been a massive student-led political response to the policies you enacted.
Thank you, Mrs. Cottrell, I appreciate you.
Like no previous board has.
Thank you for telling us.
Here are additional student responses. No matter what you do, you can never suppress diversity. Don't sweep it under the rug, and all that you are doing out of this is setting students up for failure. Diversity is necessary. Diversity Day is necessary. Diversity Day is a great experience that shouldn't have to be an extracurricular. Students are saying, "We are not going to stop. We, as students and members of this community, have the responsibility and the means to make change, and we will. We will not stop until there is an equal right and opportunity for all." Actual equal rights and opportunities, regardless of race or gender. Differences shouldn't be controversial. Treat others as you want to be treated, and embrace learning. Spread cultures and celebrate difference. Diversity is necessary. Diversity is important, because it builds empathy. Students said, "We learned a lot today." I think most people did, and a lot of people didn't go out who could have benefited. This is why we should have it all in school, so that those that aren't just passionate about it can also have the same experiences.
I have more of the student comments. The perfect place for lecture and discussion-based activities is in school. Let students think in school. Get the stupid politics out of your head. Listen to the students you're supposed to be representing and benefiting. You say that Diversity Day has no place in school. Obviously, the students disagree. Look at your actions objectively, and you should be able to figure out just how bad that this was. Forest Hill School District literally canceled Diversity Day. Are you serious? Do better. What the board did was wrong. The board should be ashamed of their actions and their reasons for justifying the cancellation of this event. This event was so extremely important, it's about, it's about education, and acknowledging the differences between people, and how race, gender identity, age, et cetera, create certain challenges and obstacles that others may not have. Diversity Day is important, because it allows people to learn about other cultures and backgrounds, and also see the differences in people in our, in our community. Running from your problems won't solve anything. As adults, you should know by now, change is inevitable. If you can't come to accept it now, the time when it does come will be far more problematic. At the moment, although you were voted into office, you do not act on the majority views of the student body. That puts you in a dangerous position, where you make decisions that you do not want. It's irresponsible to limit our education in the way you have started to do, and I do not appreciate it. We cannot have intelligent conversations and discussion in our school.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Thank you.
Further comments from students at Diversity Day. As, as members of the school board, you have a responsibility to support every student in the district, as well as to prepare them for the real world, one that is increasingly diverse. Diversity Day gives students the context needed to make decisions in this increasingly diverse world. For example, campus studies have shown that job applicants with ethnic-sounding names are much more likely to be rejected from a job than applicants with white names and similar qualifications. A student who took part in Diversity Day could take the lessons they learned this year and apply them years in the future if they become someone who reads job applications. Everyone can do things to establish a more just society, just as the founding fathers wrote in the Constitution. Learning this is not any more political than learning those founding fathers enshrined the right to bear arms, prevent against said injustice and tyranny. Shall we require a permission slip to read the Constitution next? By blocking students from this opportunity, you are all failing your duty to the children and the community. This is so important for us to learn about, so that we can make the world a better place in the future, and so that we can really learn about the people around us. You are inhibiting student growth through recognition of diverse concepts. Why are you afraid of diversity? Why did you cancel Diversity Day? It's an educational experience with real-world applications. White people are so oblivious to the everyday lives of people of color, and how race affects them favorably. We deserve to be heard.
Excuse me for a second, sir. Excuse me. I'm getting emails indicating that you do not have audio, and they're coming outside of the school system. To me, I don't want to hold anybody up, but I'm recording this. You ready?
We can stop it. It's not working.
I'm not stopping, I'm just asking.
It's recording, just no audio. They can't hear. The audio's not streaming live into YouTube. It's like muted, it won't go, but it's showing that it's recording everything.
Are you able to have subtitles? I've been looking this out, so the people who are not here can read what's happening.
There's no internet, we can't share with other people, so how are, how are people going to know what we said?
You have internet, you have video, correct?
You just don't have audio?
No audio.
So can, is there a workaround?
I will have to watch the recording when it's over.
Thank you.
Do what I can, I'll, I'll search.
Antonio Cuzio, in private, for Forest Hill's students' primary attending classes, and this is more feedback for the students. You can't deny that racism is in Forest Hill School District. You can't deny people come with different backgrounds in Forest Hill School District. You can't deny that people are being educated enough on culture, president's staff, and students in Forest Hill School District. The more we deny our diversity, the more divided we will become. Listen to your students. Right now, they're telling us that we matter less to the outside boys, that we have nothing to do with our education. They're telling us we care less about us than our outsiders. Listen to us and prove you care. By trying to deny me, students, as well as fellow students, the chance to learn about diversity in school, you're denying us the chance to learn about the real world. Diversity is something that is all across the world, and it's harmful to try to deny it. By teaching diversity at a school level, it will teach students empathy, understanding, kindness, and respect towards their fellow classmates and anyone else they might meet throughout their life. The students have made it mildly clear from our protests and attendance during the event, that it's clear that we want to learn about diversity. Let us warn it, and make it at the school level, please. Listen to us, see us. We will not stand for this unfair matchup.
We have ladies here. CJ Hastings. Amber Mays. Rachel Turner. Sarah Upset. Jill Burke, ready to be.
And one final comment from the students. Diversity Day should absolutely be implemented into the school day. It's not only a great chance to learn about differences prevalent in society, but in Forest Hill School District as well. Talking to students about their opinions and experiences helps students in our own district to either make their voices heard, uplift others, or simply gain perspective when it comes to social injustice. We have seen outrage in this community over an explicit We have seen outrage in this community over an explicit message from this board to reject educational discussions and learning about diversity, about each other, and about our world. To be very clear, helping our students learn about their differences in a safe educational environment must not be avoided, as it makes us all more understanding and stronger together. After the May 1st board decision to cancel, students rallied around the critical learning they know they need, and raised over $13,000 from this community in about 48 hours. That should speak volumes to the support for the need for this learning, and the fact that it should be happening in our educational system and is supported by a large part of the community. You have heard from business members, mental health providers, teachers, parents, and students. You've just heard feedback from so, so many students. Well-articulated and powerful feedback. You ran on parent choice and letting teachers teach. You have the opportunity to do that. I respectfully request that you postpone a vote on the resolution until you truly understand the implications, and that you vote on a return of Diversity Day to both Anderson and Turpin High School for 2022-23. Follow through on your recommended plans to let the parents choose and let teachers teach.
Hello, my name is Emily Mangle. I have lived in Anderson for almost 20 years, and I am a parent of two Turpin graduates. My 2022 Turpin graduates returned from college application. They spent half a day doing diversity, equality, and inclusion activities, very similar to the canceled Diversity Day action. My 2019 Turpin grad is working for Microsoft this summer, and DEI training is a standard welcome and accepted part of cultural culture. By canceling Diversity Day and proposing this so-called kindness resolution, the school board is doing greatly disservice to any student who leaves for college or the workforce because they will not be prepared for the world outside of the University of Washington. Thank you.
Hello, my name is CJ Hastings. I'm an incoming sophomore at Turpin High School. I would like to talk about the proposed resolution to create a culture of kindness and equal opportunity for all students and staff. It pushes the rule of teaching of anything other than exist gender, heterosexual, and Caucasian that has a mole within the school system. This is harmful to so many people within the school system, as there are many who do not follow into that, including a majority of my friends and myself. If you ban teaching of the different identities, you are, you are teaching us essentially that there is only one person that it can be, and that, and that one person is the only person that exists in the world. We are not one person. This proposal also says, and I quote, "Forest Hills School District will not utilize critical race theory, intersectionality, identity, or anti-racism curriculum for student education or staff training," end quote. Forest Hills will not utilize anti-racism curriculum. What is the opposite of anti-racism curriculum? Racism curriculum. Thank you. If you ask a teacher. And second, please just let, give us a real education, and let the teachers teach where you're not like. Gracias por tu tiempo.
I, I'm an, I'm an incoming senior for Anderson, and when I used to tell my family and friends about Anderson, I used to be proud. I used to tell them about how we abolished the red suit mask off and replaced it with something less culturally insensitive and inappropriate. But now, when my coworkers and when my family ask me about my school district, I am ashamed because I know that what is said about my school district and my high school is what is going on right now. The people are so afraid of CRT, the people are so afraid of people, of each other having their own opinion, and teaching students other things than what politics say they want, that they're afraid. I stand her knowing that my pleas will not be answered because the school board has not only ignored not one, but two protests from not one, but two high schools. And so I implore you, please, when you think of our future, don't think about politics, don't think about Facebook posts, don't think about what you personally believe. Think about the students who are begging you, not as, not as students, but as people, to let them see other people, to let them experience diversity, to let them experience the glimpse of the real world before they're thrown out without having, without having any clue over the real world behind these four bubbly walls of Anderson County. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My son has a condition of autism of motor skills and his speech. Dropping off at daycare one day, I heard two boys talking. That's Killian. Do you know him? Yeah, he scares me. My heart broke. I knew it wouldn't be long before that fear returned in the hurtful words and actions against my fearful boy. The kind of behaviors that typical children are taught to do around children like mine is to not stare, do not talk about him, do not point. My husband uses his lunch breaks to feed Killian and medicate him. While there, the kids ask questions. Well-meaning adults told them it was rude. It wasn't. He answered the questions. Killian is now the most popular kid there, and kids literally cry if they can't sit next to him at lunch. All kids are taught to be kind. Kindness is not enough to wipe out fear and ignorance. Only open, honest conversations about our different, similar, unique, inherently unequal experiences will foster understanding, sympathy, and empathy. To pretend my son's existence is equal, his experience is equal to everyone else's is to negate the struggle he goes through every day and the strength he shows. No child should ever feel bad about their identity. Identities are not optional, and neither should our respect, acceptance, care, and consideration of them be. Thank you.
First off, the resolution has a very misleading title, considering it proposes the opposite. The resolution speaks against intersectionality, which defines the acknowledgement that everyone has their own unique experience of discrimination and oppression, and we must consider everything and anything that can marginalize people: gender, race, class, sexual orientation, physical ability, et cetera. And does the Forest Hills School mission statement not specifically state, and I quote, "That it is to foster a love of learning, pursue excellence, and meet the individual needs of each learner," I repeat, "each learner"? And are those learners not of different races, genders, class, sexual orientation, and physical abilities? Are they not? The resolution also references that Forest Hills School District policy code states that controversial issues may only be taught if they are remains the subject being taught. How are the facts of history considered a controversial issue? It's facts, only made controversial by those that refuse to acknowledge the facts. By specifically stating that anti-racism should not be advocated in the school, you are indeed affirming that racism should be. How can the school teach anti-bullying and not anti-racism when the two so often go hand in hand? You specifically state that the school and teachers should provide a comprehensive education of America's history that, quote, "either sanitizes its past nor denies its possibility of progress." Yet you want to enforce a sugar-coated version of history and not allow us to recognize students' individuality, which directly prohibits the possibility of any moral progress. Many countries have entered a blood history, and their acceptance, awareness, and education of that history has given them a much more positive outcome than where this is going to be.
Hi, my name is Jill Burke at Ragacy. I am a parent to four kids in the district, two here at Mangle where I also serve as the EPO president, and two at Mercer. I want to start this evening by standing in solidarity with all of these students and parents and community members who have spoken out against the kindness resolution, as well those who have spoken in favor of Diversity Day. That's actually not why I wanted to talk to you tonight, but I did feel it was important to say, and it feeds into why I am here. The lack of communication and discussion at the board meetings, the lack of understanding of what the leaders in our buildings do are contributing to the cycle of outrage, to the rampant rumors in our community. There are people in this building who want to collaborate and work together, to put students at the center of what we do and work together, and the board is not giving back. Please do better. Our kids deserve it. We don't need, look how many invested parents you have here tonight. This is an asset. Let's use it to do amazing things.
Public education is under attack at every level. Nationally, schools are under-resourced, understaffed, and underfunded, while we demand more and more of our underpaid and underappreciated teachers, up to and including literally dying to protect their students from the epidemic of gun violence. In Ohio, we're working within a funding structure that would lead to a constitutional deficit. And here in Anderson, we are facing a mental health crisis, an alarming rate of student, student suicide, and a bank account that is dwindling by the day with no plan to pass a levy that will adequately fund our schools. While our teachers and administrators fight to provide the best for our students, what is our Board of Education doing? They are spending their time drafting resolutions that will harm our students on every level. In the short term, marginalized students will be further ostracized, afraid to speak up, and unable to find a counselor to safely speak to about anything that could possibly be deemed controversial. They will be denied the education needed to pass AP tests, the ACTs, and to prepare for college. And in the long term, they will be sheltered and unprepared to work in a global economy in which every Fortune 500 company is ramping up their DEI efforts, not sending them. In short, this board, who was elected by less than a quarter of eligible voters in the community, is actively fighting against our students' futures, and we cannot vote this to continue.
Hi, I'm a parent of two children in Forest Hills School District, including CJ who spoke earlier, who was involved in the Diversity Day movement. And I wanted to start with the most important thing that I don't forget, which is reading from Luke 12 in the Bible, verses 2 and 3. "Nothing is covered up that will not be uncovered, and nothing secret that will not become known. Therefore, whatever you have said in the dark will be heard in the light, and what you have whispered behind closed doors will be proclaimed from the housetop." I am coming to you today to say that it doesn't matter how many people elected you, your job is to serve all of the students, and part of that job is not authoring in secrecy. There was an email on March 30th from Mr. Bibb saying that Diversity Day was political, but then we were told that it was canceled for process. There are so many examples of this, and we deserve the truth. We deserve transparency, especially these students and the students of color and the parents of students of color that have talked to me since Diversity Day was canceled. They deserve better, and they deserve the truth. And I don't know how much time I have left, so I want to make sure that I say, "The truth always comes to light."
My name is Colin Owens. I'm a Turpin graduate of the last 2022. Throughout my time as a Spartan, I had many opportunities to make my voice heard, but today I want to take one more to make a case for diversity. Diversity means a lot of things to many people, but to me, it is about two things fundamentally: respect and recognition. It's about respect and recognition for the millions of innocent men, women, and children snatched from their homes, brought to the new world, separated from their loved ones, and made to work as slaves. It's about respect and recognition for the millions more painvolent terrorists who work on our infrastructure. It's about respect and recognition for people broken by oppression in their homelands who seek liberty that their eyes can only be found in the United States. We live in a country of immigrants, but there is a clear cultural disparity that exists: German Americans, Italian Americans, Polish Americans, Irish Americans, so many histories and traditions that we hold dear. However, due to the barbaric treatment that they endured, African Americans have been stripped of their ethnic and cultural identities, and a term was coined to systematically group varied peoples from a continent large enough to contain mainland Europe, the United States, and China within its borders. Diversity Day is not to place blame or feel responsible for actions committed generations ago. It's a chance to understand those harmful actions of the past and learn how to respect those who are different from us while working towards a more inclusive future. Thank you.
The last two remaining speakers, Alayra Tankman, Jeff Nye, and Stacy Bailey.
While I join many of the voices that have been here for you today to point out that this resolution that's been proposed is obviously an anti-diversity measure, what I'd like to really take a look at as we walk through this is what the actual language of this resolution is, because there are some particularly problematic things contained within this proposed resolution. It states that there is to be an avoidance of controversial issues where any more than one solution is being supported. We can't, we can't expect history teachers to teach about history without covering issues that are controversial, and where there continue to be those who support different resolutions than like him of that. This resolution states that this district will not support anti-racism. As was previously stated, the opposite of anti-racism is racism. To state that this district does not wish to be anti-racist is to support racism and is a racist act in and of itself. It's heartbreaking to me to think that that is a resolution by which we would govern our school district where our children spend their days. Beyond that, the dis, or this resolution proposes that Forest Hills School District partners with parents to assist in their responsibility to educate their children. I think that action with Diversity Day shows that that is not true. Parents did approve of Diversity Day.
I am a local family medicine physician, and I'm also a local parent. I want to say to the board, we, even though it's about people leaving CRT education at the collegiate level, we often come together and say, "Okay, we won't touch it in our district." Even though our superintendent has said it's not taught in our schools, I know we're not going to convince you otherwise. But why I'm here today to talk is to discuss why this resolution is so dangerous. It's dangerous because it's giving our board too much control over our education. Our students need to learn how to thrive in our increasingly global, multilingual, and multicultural society. Pondering racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic disparities helps our students understand our society, and helps them appreciate what they have, and helps them grow into compassionate adults. Removing this removes the truth of the world from the education of our students. Our parents should have control and be able to sign permission slips to teach our students this truth. Our district consists of students that are mostly white and affluent. This resolution would create present-day segregation by not allowing our students to understand how the other half lives, just like the 1950s. Sure, a student of a different race or a different socioeconomic status can physically come to our school, but they will not be allowed to be understood and will not be able to discuss this. As a physician, I am very concerned about the future and the health of those students.
Thank you, Alayra.
I'm opposed to the resolution. I understand what the board is trying to accomplish with the resolution. I used to agree with it all, but that's actually not my area of thought today. I think even if you accept the value of the need for a CRT ban, the resolution would far be beyond that. The point that I don't know how you could make it a compliant curriculum by the time school starts all of this. It would ban anyone from requiring guidance or encouraging students to consider reflection of race, class, culture, and other things. It's incredibly wrong to ban things totally unrelated to CRT. Here's some things a teacher couldn't say to a student through this resolution. They couldn't say, "Before you judge someone, walk away with your shoes." They couldn't say, "Remember that some kind of hat of partisan." Those are appeals to consider or confront each other, class, privilege, culture, race, religion, and other things. How one of those kind of comments is not creating a culture of kindness? It's the opposite. So if that's your goal, the resolution is self-defeating. Here's some other things you couldn't teach. Anything from Romeo and Juliet to Atlas Shrugged. You couldn't teach about emancipation proclamation of Brown's Department of Education or the Civil Rights Act of 1964 because you can't do that without consideration or confronting privileged class, race, and racism. What really got me out of your days, you had this banned Hope Spot because the Hope Spot educates students about cultural differences that may put their peers at risk for suicide. Don't do that. Don't adopt this.
I'm a 35-year resident, a 25-year educator and coach, and a parent of a 2021 grad-
and a parent of a 2021 graduate. And yes, I realize I'm taking a risk as an employee staying here. Change is difficult, and that's what this is about. This is the fear of change, fear that the status quo, which has served for so long those in power, is shifting beyond recognition. Fear that not if, but when this shift occurs, there will be no place for those who are now feeling persecuted and marginalized as a result of these catch-all boogeymen: CRT, D E I, anti-racism, intersectionality, inclusion. Ultimately, what inclusion strives for, the entire point of anti-racism, is why diversity and equity are crucial to the long-term success of our students, schools, and district, so that all people feel safe, heard, seen, and important, so that all students feel confident that they have a place to belong, to be themselves, so they feel valued, that the aspects of themselves that they love, and even more so for those aspects of themselves that they don't see, these scary terms aren't so scary at all when you step back and divest them of their politicizing need. This resolution passed will sweep vulnerable students into the shadows. It will make some of those who are starting to like themselves like themselves a little bit less. It will undermine the beautiful culture we have worked for years to create that has put our district at the forefront of the positive student experience.
Eight point O. Hold on a second. It seems you're trying to get our attention. Is this a technical issue?
Andrew Grineri is your last speaker.
Andrew Grineri is the last speaker?
Yeah.
While he's walking up there, I have a quick question. Generally, at this top of the meeting, we have correspondence to the board or treasurer or super, and that part is mysteriously dull. I did have correspondence to share, so we can discuss in the board discussion?
No, we can't.
I would like to use Andrew Grineri's chance to speak tonight.
We do.
Did he put in a sheet? Are you afraid of what he's gonna say?
I'm not like everybody else that came up. I've got two students in the district. I just wanted to speak with some kindness and equality for the board members and district leadership. You're doing a terrible job. I hate. Colleand kindness doesn't magically make this resolution come. No matter how many ways you excuse censoring education, the result is unsustainable for both women's district. You use our own Declaration of Independence to justify our aggressive agenda. Remember, the Declaration of Independence never mentioned equality for women. It was written, "All men are created equal," and our founding constitutional law has denied all but white, landowning males the right to vote, looking at the Bible, you none qualify. Thankfully, we rely on more than founding principles today. By attempting to solve a non-existent problem, you create a host of new issues for us that may persist well past your terms. You are crafting a legacy of ignorance for yourselves and asking the community to pay for it. Stop squandering resources and chasing ghosts. Stop pushing good people away. Let the teachers teach. Great leaders choose to lead by example. When will you?
Why are correspondence should no longer exist? Or what?
We have a ton of correspondence that the community should be apprised of. There's other correspondence that we're going to have to get to. It should be under a board.
No, it's not. No, it's usually at the top. It's not.
I do not see one. I do not see it.
Yeah, so I'm asking.
I think we're gonna move.
We're not gonna move on. You're gonna. You will not take stuff off like you did with this resolution and slide it in. I'm asking you to.
Linda, for how long? You've had a chance to review it, made your comments, and you have not.
Uh, Linda? Yes, not getting a resolution after the agenda was previously reviewed.
Let her speak.
Period. Board correspondence is typical. I'm asking you a simple question. Who removed it? Why was it removed? It does not go in board discussion. We all know that.
Because we have board discussion.
No. Quick question. Yes, I did it, Leslie. Or no, so-and-so did it, Leslie. It is a simple question.
Why didn't you have a chance to go through the agenda?
I did. Excuse me. This is deflection. You are not answering the very simple question. Is it because you do not want us to discuss the correspondence that the community members right here have been sending us?
I think it should be discussed in a board discussion.
Do you care about these students and these people that have board discussions?
You ran on transparency.
There is no transparency, people. At some point, calm down. At some point, this person has to be pulled back. And everyone in here should demand transparency and accountability. Your failure to answer a simple question about an agenda item should tell everybody in this community something about your ability to speak the truth. It is a simple question. Simple. You can't even answer that.
It should be discussed in a board discussion. So what's the difference?
What is the difference? Why can't you answer? It's a question. All you have to say is you didn't want to do it. If that's what it was, then just say it.
No, that's not what it is. You can have discussion in board discussion. You can have that comment in board discussion. So why not?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and move board discussion up front.
Oh, I wonder if anybody will second back and go for some transparent conversation finally.
Oh, wow. Sorry, we used to print hits, aren't we? We're used to print hits.
Does it matter or not? I'm certain whatever she wants to say doesn't really matter. Well, there are several.
It has to do with, we don't get to see what the correspondence is.
There are several items in the correspondence. There are several themes in the correspondence that deserve communication. That is my point. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and read every last thing, but I made a list of these themes from the correspondence that the board has been receiving. Like always, as per tradition, that is just right around the time the superintendent does his update. We have correspondence, president correspondence, correspondence to superintendent. That is pretty typical. So simply asking why all of a sudden that is not happening this month, I think is a fair question. It deserves, it's a simple, it's a simple sentence even, not even complex. Literally a simple one.
I think I've answered that a couple times.
You did not. No, you said, "We'll do it in board discussion." You didn't answer why that is now moved. Or it's actually not moved.
Because if you look at the agenda.
If you're not answering the question, it's fine. You don't want to answer.
Hey, Leslie, I answered the question.
You did not answer the question.
Why can't it go into board discussion?
You're answering a question with a question. In my classroom, that's X. Cur, do you yell? We'll have to escort you out. Ms. Hostel said that at our last meeting when Mr. Hartman was yelling at the meeting. So Linda, do we need to escort him out?
The board needs to sit down.
How did he do it?
This is how I'm doing. I'd like to ask someone on this board to have a brief recess so that we can go into executive session. Or not executive session, but a brief recess of this meeting. We need to get this thing under control. This is not appropriate. And the appropriate, this I'm talking about, ladies and gentlemen, this is a board meeting, and I'm certain that there are controversial things that are bothering you. This is a board meeting. We need to conduct business. So I would like to recommend a brief recess. I'd like to settle this room down and then conduct this meeting as it's supposed to be conducted. This back and forth is not good for anyone. It's going to escalate into something that we don't want to happen. We're not doing that.
Can I repeat?
Yes.
With the group meeting?
Again, everyone, there are many hallmarks that are related to the Forest Hill School District. Someone said, "The way you see it is the aspect that we have in our rulebook right now." And so, as we continue with tonight's meeting, I'd like to respectfully ask that we allow the board to conduct this meeting and that we refrain from anything other than that child. Beautiful noise in the back of the room. You know what I'm saying. We are a great community. We have great teachers, great students, families, and so forth. So let's get through the board meeting.
But isn't this a public meeting?
It is a board meeting. It has public commentary. That is done. And so now, there is no more commentary, so the board may maintain its seat. Thank you, ma'am, for coming and for investing in our students and our school life. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. So I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna make an addendum to the agenda to add seven point two as board correspondence. Thank you, guys.
Mrs. Hostel?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Dr. Rasmussen? Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jensen?
Yes.
Thank you for the addition. There have been plenty of correspondence to the board, as I mentioned. The most recent, so first of all, there have been many, a lot, hundreds. And what I tried to do over the last couple of days is sort of organize them into themes so that we can at least split them out there. Most recently, and perhaps throughout the last several months, actually, the one major theme that emerged is a lack of communication with the public and a lack of responsiveness. That's the first thing. And I think that we absolutely need to tackle that tonight in the appropriate agenda area for discussion. But again, that is a theme emerging from the correspondence to the board. I will say there are times where we are inundated, and sometimes we can't respond to every email. But I believe later this evening, we should be able to, each one of us, discuss how we're gonna handle that, because that is a growing problem in this community. And our school board should be open. The second big theme that occurred today is the addition of the resolution to tonight's agenda. Obviously, right, Diversity Day. And I want to make a point, too. I didn't count because I lost track. At the meeting where the board canceled Diversity Day, the school board president read emails as evidence to support the cancellation of that day. And our correspondence shows an inordinate amount of emails in support of Diversity Day versus the few opposing it. So I want to be very clear about that correspondence. And it's my understanding that people have requested those via Freedom of Information Act, so that's pretty easy to verify. Plus, you know, I just look at my emails. We also have had quite a few emails, again, I believe, resulting from another Freedom of Information Act request from Mrs. Jones to Scott Preble that indicates, quote, "Tyrant Policy 9211, how can you approve this plan?" Referring to the Turpin outdoor learning space when the board is discussing consolidation. It goes on to say that the Turpin outdoor learning space could be, quote, "destroyed during quality consolidation." I have seen that email, because it was forwarded to the rest of the board, that has prompted, I believe, an influx of emails and commentary from people wanting to know, "Has the board voted on consolidation?" No, we have not. And again, we can discuss that further. Those are some of the big themes over the last several months that have been coming our way. Now, there are other small items, of course. But during board discussion, I would like to discuss the following items as related to the board correspondence that we've been receiving. One, a lack of communication and professionalism regarding board operations and how we can come together and correct that for ourselves and for our community. So I'm talking about internally and externally. A procedure, or at least every board member's approach to answering or not answering emails from community members, including students. I did respond to one recently that called me demonic and the B word, and it told me to go F myself. So, you know, I just wrote back, "Thank you for your very persuasive remarks." But I did respect that. I think we also need to discuss our tenuous financial situation and levy. That is another thing that emerged in the correspondence we've been receiving. First Amendment rights of students and attempts to stop them from exercising such rights. An H R complaint I filed against Mrs. Hostel for saying people who are against racism are charlatans and academics like myself and educators are illegal. This new resolution will undoubtedly be up for discussion. Diversity Day and students' invitation to testify to Congress about it and how we reinstate that. Teacher contracts. Those are up for negotiation next year. We don't have a levy on ballot, so that's a topic of conversation. That needs to happen. And related to consolidation, it's time to pull this curtain back. Now, there have been, my knowledge, there have been no illegal meetings. But separately, former board members did meet with the board separately. So it wasn't like, it's no different than if somebody in the audience emails me and says, "Hey, can we meet to discuss this issue?" It was that situation. And they presented a plan that was from something like 10 years ago. That included selling off a high school and getting rid of about two elementaries. There were several different scenarios. So that is where this is emerging from. But my point goes back to the number one theme emerging from our board correspondence, which is a lack of communication and professionalism regarding that communication, that transfer. That is so destined. There was distrust before, and I think we have moved from distrust to straight-up fear in this community. And it can be fixed if we pull back that curtain and just be honest and discuss. So those are the themes that I wanted to address in the correspondence that we've been receiving. And those are the items I would also like to discuss further in detail as we move into the board discussion. And items thirteen point one and thirteen. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to business operations.
I have a little bit different, some different agenda items today. I have two informational items and then two actions. The informational items is, first one is eight point one, nutrition and wellness. Every three years, we must look at our nutritional wellness policy and run it through a rubric to determine whether we are meeting the guidelines of the nutritional wellness process, which we are. We have, the rubric was included in the board package. If you notice, there's only one thing that we partially meet the goals, and it's the food, non-sold foods and beverages. And that comes into effect when we have Celebration Day and the snowy comes in and sets up camp and gives out free snowies, or we get some ice creams that are donated by the PTAs and stuff like that. That's a challenge that technically, they don't necessarily meet all nutritional guidelines, so we can only say that partially meets that. But other than that, we are in full compliance with the state and with policy. But other than that, we are in full compliance with the state and with policy, 8510. The next item on the agenda is another informational item, and, do you want to try to show this presentation? There is, in Ohio Revised Code, in July of 2011, and I must say, I'm going to really stutter through this terribly, because Ms. Strauss, our Director of Food Services, was unable to be here to explain this eloquently. Okay? But in July 2013, 2011, we have, Ohio Revised Code 3313.814 requires each school, district, Board of Education, and each charter, non-public or governing school authority to adopt an enforced nutritional standard. And types of foods that will be sold on regular premises during school day. So this was, you know, a law that went into place, and the best thing I can say bottom of the... Or still, school district is in full compliance with the Revised Code. The, some of the things that this has us look at is we look at, anything that we serve must meet or exceed the district's nutritional standards. No foods or beverages that are associated with the district's food service program should be sold during school hours. And it also allows us for unassociated food programs, i.e. the boosters at sporting events, after school activities, to not meet those guidelines, meaning we can still maintain the Revised Code set. Again, it goes into different sets with selling through vending machines and stuff. If you remember back in the day, we could actually have soda machines in schools where kids could get sodas. That is no longer. And again, any food sold after the time is up to the discretion of the Board for after-hours vending. Again, those are the main, big key points. There is a table in the packet, if you notice, that talks about the different types of beverages that you must serve. It must be 100% juice and the ounce requirements, I think Ms. Strauss put in there, too, also. So those are two informational items. Tia does a phenomenal job with our food service. If you remember a few years, few months back, she received an award that Hamilton County had to come because we were the only school district that kind of met every single criteria for the award. Ms. Strauss does a phenomenal job, and the ladies and men that work in the cafeteria is doing a great job. So those are my two informational celebratory items for that. The business items that we do have is item 8.3. We are going to have a lunchroom price increase. The federal government no longer is providing free lunches to all students, as they have for the past couple of years with the pandemic. So we are going back to lunch, normal lunch prices. It's really just an increased price of the main entrees by 50 cents for the elementary and the high schools. And where that came in, some of the stuff, you know, that, as we all know in our own food budgets, stuff has started to go out of control. We're moving just from hamburger buns being $1.62 up to $3.07. You know, you're going, you know, 5,000 hamburger buns a day. That makes a big difference. And, you know, and the most crisis-ridden one is the ranch dressing, as you know. Every high school gets a ranch dressing. They have one for $13 up to $25. So that's a big charge, and we could run a lot of ranch dressing. Then, so that's it with the food service. And the final item is, as you remember, last month, we accepted the new process with Ortho Cincinnati Price Hospital. What we have on the agenda here is a memorandum of understanding with Mercy Hospital. The original contract was set to go through August 31st of this year. It was not logical or practical to try to have trainers start a preseason and then change all our doctors and trainers and things. So Mercy has agreed to a memorandum of understanding that their contract will officially be null and void at the end of this month, and Ortho Cincinnati's contract will be in full force July 1st. So that is all the other items that I have. So at this point, are there any questions from the Board? Okay. So the superintendent recommends the Board approve items 8.3 and 8.4 presented as part of the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, John. 9.0, any resources?
Good evening. For the record, Dewey's has the best ranch in the area. And I hope it's lovers out there, and we have a place to go. Good evening to the Board. There are a couple items that I'd like to bring to your attention this evening. First is the calendar, which Superintendent Preble recommended. As the Board is aware, we had a couple of hearings earlier this spring for Ohio Revised Code on both the changes to next year's school calendar as well as the 23, 24 calendar. I received one email, and it was, "We love everything except for the day after Easter not having off." But the response was, "If that's the only thing, the pros weigh outweigh the cons." That was the one that was received over the last thirty days. So the major changes, just to kind of reiterate to you all, really center around balancing the days between the fall and the spring semester, and really trying to be intentional in where we place our fall and spring conferences with students, so that we can get that conference in before the end of the term. So there's an opportunity for parents to meet with teachers beforehand and rally with it before the grade actually gets placed in that grade book. And then just the federal holiday for New Year's being celebrated on Monday the 2nd, and our teacher work day on the 3rd, were the primary changes for next year. So the superintendent recommends Board approval of the calendar for 22, 23, and 22, 24. Perfect consent agenda. Moving on to the HR report. June is a busy month, but I feel like I say that often in the HR world, but June is definitely busy. We have items A and B as retirements and resignations for Board consideration, and I would just echo Mr. Preble's comments about the special man in the board. I know this board does not hear the special man is in the back, and I appreciate everything that you have done, Anita, for our school. Okay, she went to the restroom, maybe? Okay. Thank you, Anita. And a number of certified classified resignation for approval this evening. Item C includes employment, employment personnel items D through I inclusive. There's a number of change of assignments. One of the things I'll just point out is, one of the great things, when you see a change of assignments, what it's telling you is that when there are vacancies, there are opportunities to fill from within. And I really love the fact that we can give our educators, professionals, whether certified or certified, opportunities to do something different, explore within the organization, and grow within the organization. So that's pretty exciting stuff. Item E, we have 12 appointments for Board approval this evening, and Mr. Preble's again mentioned Tiffany Brennan, who's still in the back, and Matt Veredia. Matt was actually under the change of assignment. He's already been in the organization, but we're certainly very excited for the two of them to be joining our building-level leadership teams, bringing some significant expertise to our teachers, which is awesome, and support kids and families. Let's see here. Item G, a number of special services appointments at that time. We've got a lot of folks working, course of study, summer work. It really never stops. We also have a ton of athletic, 11 pages of appointments for coaches, advisors, and item H. So a lot of great people are coming into the organization, continuing to work in various capacities with our kids. And keep flipping because there's awesome people working with our kids. And the last piece that I would mention, skipping over, we do have volunteers, just kind of per usual. We kind of get all of the folks approved in the summer for the upcoming school year. Excited to say we have 187 substitutes for your approval this evening, and that's across all categories, so I have an assistant, teachers, and other substitute personnel. But I will point out that we only have two nurse subs. So if anybody knows of nurses that want to sub in our school district, have them email me, and I'd love to meet with them. Great people coming in and doing great work in our school. Last thing would be a few revised God prescriptions, as usual, when we're hiring, a great time to revisit those. And then item M is our salary schedule for our substitute rates for certified and certified staff. Since the regular meeting of the Board last month, our staffing F E is 800.23, as per the schedule, and the superintendent recommends Board approval of personnel items at listed.
Thank you. 9.0, future new learning curriculum?
Good evening. Shane and I would like to present with you the student parent handbook for the 22, 23 school year. I wish, I guess Shane brought the ranch dressing to head on to. It'd be a good thing. Mr. Preble's, congratulations, making it to your last board meeting. Appreciate everything you've done for us as a team that's sitting over there and personally for myself. On to the handbook, preschool through sixth grade. Many of the changes that were in here were in the board update. We gave you a kind of a highlighted copy of the changes and then a clean copy, which is in the board agenda tonight. Many of the things in the elementary side of things, we took out from kind of a high school lens, such as hall passes in the elementary, athletic directors, athletic awards, those type of things. So we just made it a little bit more elementary, more than anything. So presenting with you the preschool through sixth grade handbook. And similarly, not too many changes for the 7 through 12 handbook. Again, they're highlighted, some grammatical double-checking updating of names and titles and some phone numbers. Couple of things that were cut were the previous graduation requirements. Now that we have the class of 2023 requirements, we don't need the old ones in there. There's a couple other things that were a little bit redundant. We wanted to update excused absences for anyone to make sure it aligned with Board policy. Essentially, that was it. So with that, the superintendent recommends the Board approve the grades 8, 8 through 6 and grade 7 through 12 student parent handbooks for the 22, 23 school year. I've shown the attachments. Thank you.
Thank you. 11.0, technology?
Good evening. For technology tonight, we have one item, item 11.1, Hamilton-Clamott Cooperative Contract, which runs from July 1st, 2022 to June 30, 2023. This is an annual contract that we have with HCC, which provides software and network services for the school district. Any questions? The superintendent recommends the Board approve an annual contract for services with Hamilton-Clamott Cooperative for the period July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, and I've shown the attachments. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, for now, Treasury Report?
The Treasury's report begins with the temporary appropriations for our upcoming fiscal year 23. There are only eight days left in our current fiscal year, and I will tell you, the Treasury's office is screwing like none other. It's year-end, and we also are implementing new software beginning July 1 due to the obstacle of some of the old software. So it's been quite a busy time in the Treasury's office this past month, and the next day they promised to be quite a busy time, too. But anyhow, I say that because we start, this is how we start our new year. We start out with temporary appropriations for the Ohio Revised Code. That's to get us through the summer while we spend our staffing and our planning for the upcoming school year. The Ohio Revised Code requires that permanent appropriations be in place by September 11. So we will be bringing a full year's of appropriations to you to approve at the September meeting. Right now, temporary appropriations are set at 30% of current year appropriations to get us through the summer. Agenda item 12.2A presents a list of donors over the last month who's given a total of $66,000. I could see you to be amazed by the wonderful donors we have in this district to support our programs this month. Agenda item 12.2B is a statement of board accounts, which present all funds activity over the last 11 months. Which is the item 11, the General Fund, our five-year forecast fund for the month of the fiscal year today ended May 31st. May was a low cash flow month, as we expected, and the district continues to be on track to meet our five-year forecast annual revenue projections at the end of the month through end. So eight more days, and we're right on track to make our five-year forecast numbers. Items D and E present expenditures in the General Fund. And again, we are also right on track with those expenditures, with 92% of our fiscal year's fleet at the end of May. We spent 89.2% of our appropriations with another 3.6 committed for future expenditures. Agenda items F and G, see the May 31st bank reconciliation and investments. Agenda item I is the annual request we bring this month a year, and that's for the Board approval to set our travel mileage for the upcoming school year. It is simply set at the current IRS rate. That current rate is 2.5 cents per mile. If approved, this rate becomes effective July 1, 2022. Item J is a request to approve the Board Service Fund expense allocations for fiscal year 23. Again, this is an annual request that we bring to you for the upcoming school year. That said, our respectfully request that the Board approve the Treasury's agenda item 12.1 or 12.2J as part of the new content agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the action items, 8.1, 3, 8.3, to 11.2 is presented, or 12.2 is presented.
Mrs. Jennings?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resnessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hossfeld?
Yes.
And moving on to 13.0, board discussion.
13.1? I would like to address the item we mentioned earlier in the correspondence. Just based on the public comments, I'll start with the resolution that was, that is going to be presented this evening. Is there a technical thing? Is it working? Okay. So first of all, as many in the community have reached out and explained, as the agenda was posted yesterday morning, and I reviewed it then, and then later that afternoon, it was changed to include the resolution. Just some background, I initially thought that, or I presumed that the board president added it, and I later, I asked who authored it, and Mrs. Hossfeld told me, and emailed that Mrs. Jonas was the originator. She did not necessarily use the word "author." I have asked for that document, not the PDF, the actual document, to identify who authored it. I think that's a pretty simple request. I have some major concerns about this, and I am prepared to go line by line. That's going to be a lot of time, I know. Here are some big things. Last month, the Indiana Star, along with the Today Show, New York Times, and Yahoo News, and everyone else under the sun, reported that the College Board Advanced Placement Program said it will remove AP designation from courses when required topics are banned. That included controversial topics. Because I'm a college educator, we discuss items that require critical thinking. It is not my job to tell. It is not my job to tell a student how to think. It is my job to help prepare them to think critically so that they can formulate their own positions and arguments for that matter. And I firmly believe that every teacher in this district does that. I do not believe what they're being accused of essentially. But we are now, if this resolution passes, Forest Hills will be at risk for losing the ability to offer AP courses. The College Board was contacted today. They understand that this policy is, resolution is up for discussions. And they said it will have to be examined, and that means potentially removed. So this district, this district of excellence and education, and this one gentleman often comes and says Anderson College or Anderson University, you know, the AP classes are gone. So I would love to know, one, like what my board colleagues plan to do when we lose AP distinction over this policy. Because that is a fact, that is not an opinion. The resolution also refers to, and I quote, well, actually, I'll just read the excerpt. Whereas, critical race theory, anti-racism, and all related euphemistic surrogates should similarly not be advocated in any form. And F H S D is curricula or staff training. Now, Ms. Hosbell said this originated from you. Can you define euphemism for the audience so that they are very clear on what the language that this district wants to pass is? What do you, how do you define a euphemism?
Sure, Leslie. So to back up a little bit, I am the one who offered it. When it comes to the controversial issues policy, it should be noted that that has been a board policy since two thousand and nine. And what that policy says is, and everybody's, I think, you know, just not taking this part into account where yes, it does itemize what the three definitions of controversial issues are. But it also says that these issues may be a part of instructional programming when there is a balance and all sides of the issue are discussed. So when you say the AP classes could be gone because of this, because we're banning discussions? There is no banning. It's just noting the controversial issues policy. And all we want to do, or the reason why I authored this, is just to make sure that both sides are always being taught to the students.
But it specifically says anti-racism is not allowed.
So to go back to the anti-racism, when we're talking about anti-racism, I know when you look up the definition of it, it says, you know, when you oppose racism. Well, I'm. Folks, I, we really want to have an open discussion, but there is no way to have an open discussion with all the chitter chatter and the laughing. And we're trying to talk. I heard what everybody said earlier about the lack of communication. I totally agree with everybody. We can do a much better job communicating. I mean, it isn't funny, we are, we're brand new. It's like drinking from a fire hose. We are trying our best that we can, and it is hard when everybody is just laughing at us. It's very disrespectful. So back to what I was saying about the anti-racism. I understand how people could maybe misread it. But where I was coming from was the Kendi's book, The How to Be an Anti-Racist. It specifically states that concepts of anti-racism are to re-energize and reshape the conversation about racial justice in America. And where I was going with that was, I, anti-racism, it's being defined as activism. We need to be treating everybody as an individual and not lifting some up based on their perception of power and pushing other people down based on their power. We're not labeling people, we need to be celebrating everybody. And I included the anti-racism in there because I don't want us to be taking on activist positions. And again, when you get to that part of it, it's all I was trying to say was CRT and anti-racism. And then when it comes to the CARE program. So I had stuff prepared and I'm a little jumbled now. So just to start basically with this resolution. During the April regular board meeting, Mr. Prebels asked us that the board needs to give him and administration direction on vision, on the vision. I realized, again, there is a lack of communication. So I took it upon myself to prepare this and bring it to the board so we could discuss. In my opinion, something like this is what we all ran on. And this will set the tone for the new super and how we would like to move forward. And that's where I was going with this. I mean, I think it's, like I said, it's obvious to say the four of us were elected based on the platform of no CRT. And while the district declares there is no CRT, I agree, there is no CRT one oh one class here. But the concern was, again, the CARE team, its association with its consultants, the professional development training on cultural responsive teaching, using the books such as White Fragility and utilizing this D B I E model. Now, it's safe to say that we can agree to disagree on what we actually think of the CARE team, how it started and what it evolved into. But to fast forward to, you know, our first meeting as a board in twenty twenty-one, the super said the CARE team had ended. And we took him for his word and the CARE team ended. But what happened the months into us being in office, certain incidents occurred, which I think warranted this resolution. So I just want everybody to know, I'm here to support the success of all of the students. Again, I think we all support our students, but we maybe have a different way of getting there. So I just want the community to know that we value students and staff, no matter the individual. And really, that's where I was going with that. I'm sorry, did I?
No, because I asked you to define euphemism. You used that word, so for the community, so they're clear on what exactly you're voting. If you wrote this and wrote euphemism.
Other, other related, other related.
Euphemistic surrogates, define euphemism. I know it off the top of my head. I mean, you know, it's, if you put that in there.
It would be other, other related topics to opposing racism. I mean, Leslie, I'm not sure. You know, I hate playing this back and forth game with you all the time, and I guess.
It's not bad. I mean, if you're.
You had a problem with an email, too, and you wrote to me saying how last minute and how you maybe felt left out about all this. You have created a hostile environment up here in the board. Leslie, I consider our first interaction that we had after being elected, and you set me up on a CBS interview.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
How dare you make such defamatory, inflammatory accusations?
I have the floor right now, Leslie. At our very first board meeting where we all met as professionals, brand new. I am speaking, please. As brand new board members, within the first five minutes of being there, you threatened us and telling us you haven't decided if you're going to sue us yet. And then we have our meeting, and as we're walking out, you make sure to mention the same thing. That you haven't decided if you're going to sue us yet. And I told you, I wanted to be able to work with you. I want to be able to respect each other, to talk, to work together, to do the best thing for this district. But you have made it impossible to do that. I mean, it's difficult communicating with you. We all can communicate together, but for some reason, it's, it's hard to communicate with you. If you don't agree with something somebody says, you've got the media there. You don't come to special meetings, you don't participate a lot.
My brother was in the ER after he was found unresponsive, and you know that. He was about to die.
Okay.
And that's why I was not at that special meeting. Shame on you.
Leslie, it's more than the special meeting. I mean, I could go, I, there's a little list of things.
Sarah, can we get to this instead of your little personal grievances? I mean, seriously, this is so silly.
This is about discussions, and this is about respect, and I'm still not done yet. The frivolous lawsuit that you, that you, or the complaint that you filed with our board president.
No, it's not frivolous.
Again, he's just causing us a bunch of money. And again.
To protect people against racism. Period.
Respect. Again, you leak confidential information to Facebook.
How dare you? Wow, this is all recorded, right? Because this is going straight to the state of Ohio. How dare you make such accusations, Sarah?
Well, I have an email specifically from the past board when they were too scared to talk to you. Everyone had to have conversations verbally with you. So you can say all day that it's the four of us, but to be honest, I thought you, as the most senior board member, could help lead us. And you have done everything you can to work against us, to sabotage us. And that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Sarah, for creating such a warm and fuzzy environment counter to what you claim. Okay.
Again, I'm just trying my hardest to be able to be respectful and get along with you.
So let me talk a little bit about respect. It wasn't long ago.
I am not done, I'm not done yet, though. Okay. Because then you brought up also my email about the outdoor spaces. So I wanted to be completely clear to everyone.
Public record.
I know, but you didn't read it all. So when it came to the outdoor spaces, again, new board members drinking from a fire hose. The policy manual is huge, so I apologize for not memorizing and knowing every single one of them. But at the April twentieth board meeting, I think it was Bob had brought up the exploring redistricting and consolidating. Turned to Scott and said, could we create some kind of committee to begin the discussions of this? Nothing has happened, nothing is decided on. And we bring it to, okay, April twentieth meeting, let me back up again to. When it came to the meeting of us meeting two on two with an outside member about their past dealings with redistricting and consolidating, there wasn't a, we're going to do one high school and we're going to get rid of two elementary schools. No one has ever said that. All they were doing is presenting the best information to us and just sharing with us, educating us. That's all we were doing. So based on that conversation, Bob brought that up in the April meeting, asked Scott to do a committee. Now, we, again, nothing has happened. But when we got in our board information update, all of the information about the outdoor spaces for schools. Again, I support all of this for the students, I want this for the students. All I want, I don't want this to come back on us and say, hey, why did you guys let us build all these outdoor spaces? Shouldn't you have told us that we were considering or exploring this consolidation? I mean, I went ahead and called the Forest Hills Council president just to talk to her about this. And specifically, that code policy seventy-two thirty says any of these donations or gifts or anything need to come to the board for approval. That's all that I was saying. And then again, communication, Leslie, I am there with you. We could do a really good job, or we could do a better job of it. And I would ask, Leslie, here, can I ask you a question? Could you help us with communicating? I mean, that is your forte. I mean, could you, again, I met with Josh and I asked, you know, we talked about communication. And again, we should be talking here in the board meetings. But again, not everybody can come to these board meetings, not everybody has the time to watch them. So proposing to the board, how would you guys feel about after the board meetings having a memo update and putting it on the news part of our website so the community can know what's going on and can update them? I am all for being transparent, but I think, again, we're brand new drinking from a fire hose. I don't think we know what's right or wrong. So that's all I wanted to say.
Katie, have you felt like you've been communicated with regularly? Were you aware that the resolution was even a thing?
I found out that it was on the board agenda. After which it was called, I don't even see it again, I just talked about it. I do not personally feel like I am communicated with effectively. I personally would like to see us talking to each other after committee meetings and letting each other know what's going on at each meeting. I have no idea what's going on at your policy committee meetings, yours. Facility meetings, like I, I think that somebody should be calling, the head of that committee should call every board member and let them know exactly what was discussed. I cannot with that, I shouldn't go under this meeting, I shouldn't pass it. And so I think that part of us working together and being part of a team is, say, hey, after the teaching and learning committee meeting, either I call everybody or we split it up or however we want to do that. I truly believe that we need to have a conversation. I would like to hear from them more often after the meetings with the laptop. To hear what is going on each week. So I personally do feel out of the way.
So, so internal communication, right? Processes. So I'm the most senior one, and you would like my help, Sarah. Here's, here's a bit of information. Professional communication. There, it wasn't not, it wasn't long ago when we had a board member up here who did not feel like she had the support the other members of the board. But that board member always got a call. She always knew what was happening, and we talked through issues that would be up for whether a motion, a resolution, whatever. That is simply the board president taking the lead to say, to call every board member and say, hey, so and so wants to put forth a motion, a resolution, whatever. Here's the background. That way you are not taken off, taken, taken by surprise, first of all, especially when it's, you know, in the eleventh hour. So that's, you know, you're drinking by the fire hose. I mean, at some point, we have to get past that and accept the responsibility. So Mrs. Jonas, I'm not going to even really acknowledge the onslaught of the illegal accusations you just made against me because we can let the courts decide that. But yes, we can, I have every legal right to defend myself. So, you know, and so do they for that matter. The point is accountability and honesty, you don't, you don't get to just demand that and/or respect when you don't ever give that respect either. It's actually mind blowing, honestly. But again, it warrants literally no energy because it's that absurd. Now, back to this resolution. Nearly every Fortune five hundred company has a diversity program. My university has an entire office devoted to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The state of Ohio requires that we provide an equitable education to everyone. It does not say equal, it says equitable for a very specific reason. That means little Bobby is struggling in math. Guess what? He needs math intervention. We can provide that to him. Little Joanie is excelling in math, so we can make sure that she has advanced math and is not being held back. But the way that this resolution is written is so sloppy and vague that it leaves the door open for all of these things to be questioned. And now, you know, essentially, we will wind up in court. We one hundred percent will wind up in court. Now, what we're saying is literally the death of expertise. That's what happened. Bob, what do you do? You, you give loans out? Katie, you are at a fitness place? Katie, you are at a fitness place? A fitness place that just, the YMCA, where I see people from the community all the time, that just had a month-long anti-racist campaign. So, is the Y indoctrinating our kids? Better not send them to the pool this summer or T-ball. Linda, I'm not sure what you do. I believe is administrative assistant. Is why you told me I went on. Katie, or are you talking to Katie? You're an auditor, Sarah. Is that correct? Something is finance, right? I'm in education. So, what I, so what I did, so, so basically, I make that show that this is a construct that is taught in law school and in graduate-level programs. I'm the only one up here that has actually reached that level of education and has ha, and has, has had education on it. I still would not count myself an expert just because it was simply one item of many that was discussed in the class. So, instead, I go to experts, not edweek.org. I go to actual sources to verify information and get assessments. Now, I did share this resolution with a dean at a law school in a different state who just happened to be a colleague, and he had, he said this. "It's constitutionally void for vagueness. Any ACLU summer intern would know that." That's a direct quote. So, when we ignore experts and purport to be experts, this is what happens. We end up with an oxymoronic resolution like this. It's an oxymoron to call this kind when it is actually filled with very specific hate and a desire to ignore anyone who isn't a straight white person.
Could you point out where you see that?
Excuse me, I'm still talking. It is a classic example of what academics and journalists refer to as political gaslighting. In fact, if anybody would like, feel free to shoot me an email and I'll send you the link to the handbook created by this organization to actually develop policies like this and, and, and create this political astroturf attack around racial race area. Because it's, there's a literal handbook, and it's been shared across the country to convince people that this is a problem. So, the, I asked my, the dean at law school, explain the, the vagueness in that part to me. And he said, "Well, you could make an argument that kids with special needs can't be treated differently, and that would mean no accommodations for you, and that's an ADA violation." He said, "Students that," well, I already said this, right? "Students that need intervention for learning can't be treated differently, thus they can't receive that help." Students identified as gifted should not be given curriculum to meet their needs because it would, it would be treating them different, differently. Other random topics he threw out were how the universe was formed, slavery, theories in science or math, the thin blue line on the American flag, even the Pledge of Allegiance could be an issue because it includes the, the word God. So, it's so vague that it is now open to interpretation by whomever wishes to file a complaint. So, all flags should be gone from schools. I, I have a feeling people would be upset about that. But, the problem is, it's so vague, and I'm gonna go back to this point that I'm trying to make here of when you are not well-versed in this sort of thing, we wind up with situations like this where, no matter what you say, we are, I, I, we will be upfront with the college board. That, that's a fact. And all of these other things are now open. This is not simply, and it's purposeful, because in that handbook that I'm telling you about, that again, anybody can email me, I'll send the link. It talks about why it has to be intentionally vague. They want it intentionally vague. But when it's enforced, it's so vague. So, anyone, anything is, is open for being controversial. That, that includes, you know, the things that I've already listed, so I just don't understand why this is even a thing. For, you can boil it down to a really simple reason. One, we have 22 policies on the books dedicated to treating people properly, to respect, to harassment, to whatever Mrs. Jonas openly just said. She doesn't think it's a big deal that Mrs. Hoffeld name-called people as charlatans if they're against racism. I, I'm sorry, I do have a problem with that. I do think it's valid, and I do think it is worth exploration because that is not setting a culture of kindness in our district. It is instead saying a charlatan, again, here, here I go, nerdy professor with a definition, is a fake and a fraud and all sorts of negative things if you are against racism. That is a big deal to me. That does not set a climate of kindness in our district. It sets up anyone who experiences racism and things like that. When the kid at Nagle down the hall is called the N-word or it's written on their locker, which has happened, or the kid that's Jewish gets, gets attacked because the sheer fact that they celebrate Hanukkah and not Christmas, or that they don't celebrate a, a religious holiday at all, is attacked, and that happens. That happens in this building. Now, all of that stuff is open, and that hurts people that are victimized, kids that are victimized. So, this resolution, to say that this policy has been in existence since 2009, it has, but it has never been added with all of this extra content, these two pages of very specific content that are nearly cookie-cutter to resolutions in Texas, Oklahoma, California, you name it. But again, because it comes from the same handbook, which I'm happy to share all of the, these resources with anybody who would like them. Mrs. Jonas admitted this is political. Canceling Diversity Day was political. When did I say that? You, excuse me, I'm still talking. You, you did not let me rebut when you were talking. So, Mrs. Jonas said, "When we for-ran, we ran on the platform of no CRTs, so that's what this is." So, it is political. And you know what doesn't matter? This. What matters is that kid and that kid, and all of these kids that get up here and tell you, "You are failing us. Bob, do you care?" Then acknowledge them. Everybody, acknowledge them. Take this paper home with everything that they said and read it, and let it speak to your heart. Because this is a game. I don't want that back and forth. This is a stupid game that we are playing here, and it is dangerous, and it hurts our kids, period. It doesn't matter. This, this is so silly. We have teacher negotiations coming up next year. We have ran off one of the best superintendents in the state, no matter what he says. You are. And we have run him off. We lost damn near half our administrative team at Nagle. And so, we lost, we've lost so many people. It is time to draw the line in the sand and say, "Let's just stop." It is about the kids. It is about teaching. It's so frustrating. A woman in our community sent me a message today. She, I believe she's married to a white man and they have interracial children. And she wrote me this long heartfelt message that gave me children. I didn't have time to write back because it was 5 o'clock, and it's also my daughter's 9th birthday today, and here I am. And she said in her email, or in her message to me, that she'd been reflecting on this resolution and what that means for her and her kids. And then she thought, "But now I wanna think about what that means for you because you're actually in it." And I thought, "You know what? Wow." Empathy. That's empathy. And you know what? It doesn't even matter about me. It matters about her and her family and her kids and that they feel welcome here. Anderson Township, Newtown, it's changed. It has. It's not the same place it was 10 years ago or 20 years ago. And you know what? That's okay. That is okay. I don't, I don't know how, I do know how we got here because I'm working on a research paper about it. I'm following the trail, which is how I have the handbook that I keep mentioning. It is, this, this deflates and diminishes them, and it should say something. If you say you care, Bob, that you care about what those students say, then tell them right now what you're gonna do. You're gonna turn around in five minutes and vote to pass this, to pass this motion? If you sit here and say that you care about everything those kids said, their parents, and then you turn around, it's an oxymoron, just like the title of this resolution. And if you're not sure what an oxymoron means, I think I already defined it. If you can't say you're kind when you turn around and say, "Don't ever, don't, I don't wanna know anything about you." "I don't wanna know anything about you." And you cannot tell me that you're kind when you say you're against racism, you're a charlatan. And you cannot tell me that you're kind if you say that, "Oh, you're just wasting resources and, and it's frivolous because you have filed a complaint from one of the 22 policies that already exists, policy 1662, that says you cannot say racist things on the job." If we don't all agree that we can't do that, then we got a problem. We got a problem. So, this is tantamount to a gag order on top of everything else, on top of everything else. And you know what that means? First Amendment rights. We don't have to guess. This community does not have to guess what will happen because we have seen it play out all over the country. And when things like this pass, just like my friend at, at the law school who I went to said, "You're gonna wind up in court with First Amendment right violations." Because little Bobby can't, and I'm so sorry, I keep saying Bob and Bobby, just that, not necessarily you, but just the name, comes to class and says, "Yeah, my, my dad's took me to the park today." Nope, no, no, no. That's a violation. And it is, this is so vague, so vague, that that makes it, that even that is possible to, to be an issue, to be a complaint, to be a court case. And, and people have every right to defend themselves legally. They do, and they will, and we will be in trouble. And, and frankly, like, shame on you. If, if you say we're gonna be kind and vote for something like this, that is a slap in the face to every single kid that's, to every single kid that has emailed, to every single parent, teacher, administrator that have been brave enough to speak out against this because they know, they don't, they're not doing this. They know it. I believe them.
Father Katie, would you like to add anything?
I would like to make a clarification on a claim that Leslie has made against me, and I will read the claim right now. "I'm filing a formal complaint against Board of Education President Linda Hoffeld for violation of the anti-harassment policy specifically under the following sections: national origin ancestry harassment, race color harassment, and bullying. During a special meeting of the board I made first, Linda Hoffeld stated that described those against racism or anti-racist as charlatans. I am a Hispanic woman and colleague who was exposed to rhetoric while on the job. After the meeting, I reflected and occurred, of what occurred and had to process the pain and public humiliation I experienced because of her targeted words. Hoffeld name-called me and others who are against racism. A charlatan is generally defined as a fraud. During the meeting, Hoffeld also made other comments that included describing educators who are against racism as academic elitists. Hoffeld is well-aware that I'm an educator and academic at a local university. Her targeted comments hindered me from performing my Board of Education duties by creating an environment with hateful rhetoric aimed at people of color who stand against racism and who are educators. Her behavior is not spirited debate between board members. It was racially offensive and used name-calling. I request an independent compliance officer be assigned and that immediate attention be taken to protect myself and others from racism while on the job and in the presence of Hoffeld. I believe her actions are in violation of board policy and have created a hostile and offensive work environment. Her targeted words were intentional and designed to inflict harm, intimidation, and humiliation based on my characteristics as a Hispanic woman who stands firmly against racism in my career as an educator." I did not make those direct statements towards you, Leslie. I was reading comments from the community through emails. So, those were not direct comments that at you, towards you, or against you.
There's an investigation that is going on right now, so I don't necessarily think you doing, saying this, or me saying how I felt is actually appropriate right now until that case is settled. That doesn't...
This is public information, and we're having a public discussion in a board meeting.
Oh, yeah, we're...
And so...
Yeah.
We're allowed to.
I wrote that, and I haven't denied any of that. In fact, I'm the one that has been open about that. Because that is, whether, no matter what you say, Linda, first of all, the, the independent investigator is gonna do that. So, I wanna be careful what either one of us says as not to obstruct that situation. Now, it is my understanding that when these things happen, the result in everything else is made public after, and that the rest of us were not supposed to be necessarily discussing it. Now, that's a question for the HR person, so again, I wanna be careful with this back and forth. The ultimate point is that I was exposed to name-calling, and I was exposed specifically to name-calling because I am an anti-racist.
Thank you for that clarification.
Shall we move to, actually, hang on a second. Katie, did you wanna discuss the levy situation so that we could clear that up? Just something we had discussed.
I do. I think we need to at least make a decision one way or the other as far as this year goes. And I know we get a lot of emails about that. And I think that's something that needs to be discussed openly. I personally, and I've said this to people, I think you included, I, I think it's physically irresponsible to wait until next year to do it. A levy this year will last longer. It would be a smaller amount. I mean, I, I know there's a lot of financial hardship in the community. I would, if we're going to have a levy one way or the other, I'd rather pay less this year than next year. It would be more. I know that's a burden for a lot of people in the community, but I think ultimately, they would make that choice when they vote, so I can trust up to them. I know we've made cuts, but I don't think it's possible to make enough cuts to, to prolong a levy. I know you and I were in the meeting together with the consolidation. I'm open to exploring that, but the time to do anything with that is, it would take longer. And that's even if it seems like the right move, because it may not make financial sense now. Things are a lot different now than they were 10 years ago as far as building costs and that kind of stuff. So, I personally think we need to move forward to decide, are we putting a levy up this year?
Well, Elena did a really good job last meeting doing a presentation about the levy. Do you have, do you have like highlights that you could give about the levy that you presented?
Yeah, actually, what I was talking about was the side of the forecast. We talked about the fact that we were in a... the fact that we were in a better position due to the fact that we got more than expected from the state.
Microphone.
We also collected...
Here your microphone.
Sorry, excuse me. All right. We also collected a little bit more. Bottom line is that in terms of our five-year forecast, we ended up in fiscal year '24. We are now projecting a June 30 balance of $6 million instead of $2. Now, $6 million is still $3 million short of what the board's cash collection policy would be. So while our position has improved, the things that Katie's talking about are still true, the sooner you go for a levy, and this is true of any time, the sooner you go for a levy, the, the less that that's going to happen. But deciding which levy you're gonna go for depends on a lot of things. It depends on what, how, how much cuts you plan to make, how, excuse me, reductions, if any, you plan to implement. So I think that a lot of it comes into play. If what Katie says is true, what Sarah says is true, we have ended up in a better situation. Also, I forgot a very important thing as part of that situation that improves the financial projections. Under the leadership of Mr. Fellows, we have identified $420,000 in reductions that was put into the forecast beginning next year. So that was one, sorry, Rob, that, that effort was one of the things that actually worked that much. So...
And we got more for state funding, correct?
We did. We got about $8 million more for state funding. So all those things hold, while it improves the picture and certainly impacts the levy amount. Unfortunately, with the funding system the way it is in Ohio, and with no inflationary increases in every month of spring, as we've talked about in the paper, we're looking at inflationary amounting to 8%. That would be, we're going to probably have to look at a combination of reductions in levy. But it is true, what Mrs. Stewart is saying, that the sooner you go, the sooner you collect it, I mean, it's just, the sooner you go, the sooner you collect it, the lower amount you go for.
I would rather go for a lower amount than wait another year and go for what could potentially be a significantly more amount, or a higher amount. And, you know, before my property values change, I expect those to go up with the housing market the way it is. So, you know, not only would I be paying more as far as it being a higher levy, I could potentially be paying more because my housing now looks more. Like, you can make, we can still make cuts, and I know we've been doing plenty of stuff with like efficiencies and, and doing the best we can, but, what, gas prices went up so much that a lot of those efficiencies went out the window with contracts to pay for gas to run the buses. Even with what you just said, having more, what, in two years, that didn't change the fact that we still need a levy. And I, I just, I personally feel like it's fiscally irresponsible to wait, and it's an injustice to the community because they don't have to pay more overall. I help with... So I would like to see one go on in November, and then the taxpayers can decide if that's what they want to do or not.
Alana, does this require a motion to get a record, a vote on record?
Well, to actually put a levy on the ballot, there are two motions by statute that need to be taken. The first one needs to be taken by the 29th of July, and that is the resolution that simply goes to the county auditor. It's a resolution of necessity. We're telling them of the need for a levy, they look at our calculations of mileage versus property evaluation and, and essentially certify how much a certain mileage will, will generate. We get that back from them, that goes into a resolution to proceed, which needs to be delivered to the board's election by August 10th, should we wish to be on the November ballot. So I think that we've done quite a, we've had quite a few projections that are now two to three months old. What I think I would like to do is rerun those with the ending year balance. As I said, we have eight days coming up and working feverishly in the treasurer's office to get to that ending balance at the end of this year. So I'd like to update all those projections for you. If you want to send me email me what scenario you would like me looking at, and I typically run anywhere from 4.7 to a very unreasonable 7.7. So, so I want to make it clear, I just like to give a, not, not suggesting that in any way, shape, or form, but we just want to take a look at those. And we also take a look at the culture of homeowners. Again, we know that you've gotten a lot of data. We need, we want to be very judicious in our fiscal stewardship. Unfortunately, places like Forest Hills, the state considers faulty, and they depend, they expect our folks to shoulder the large burden of the cost to educate a child. The state only puts forth about 33% of the cost to educate a child here in Forest Hills. The average around the state is 44. So unfortunately, we know that our residents pay a lot of property taxes to the state that also go into areas that aren't as affluent as our area. And it is, I, I hear our residents say that enough we want to help, but how much is, is too much, and it's just hitting that sweet spot between what we need and what we can generate and continue to operate the school district that our residents have come to expect. We have a jewel here in the township with, that the education is top-notch here. We want to be, also keep that affordable. So it's, it's, we need to look at some different scenarios to find a reduction between what's affordable, what's allowed us to continue to provide the quality education.
Are the numbers that different than what we...
No, they won't be that, no, they won't be that different.
If we can move forward, if anything happens today, then?
Well, we can call out, we can take a look...
With the old projections.
Yeah, the old projections are not materially relevant. You know, most accountants, we like things to the, to the full place. But no, good point.
Just, I mean, if it goes to waiting to the very last minute, why not? See if we can get anywhere. Tonight it won't be that different, is what I think.
They, they will not be materially different. Good point.
The last levy that we put on, we promised our community that we would make the three-year commitment. We knew at that particular point in time, coming off the bombing, and the delays that were spent there, that it was a levy that was not a long-term situation, but one that was going to be getting us through a short period of time, which was in three years. And the commitment was to look for a four-year. And obviously, that can happen based on what I have looked at. I won't be here for the further discussion on this, but I think this is an unbelievably phenomenal school district. And in six years, I have spent a tremendous amount of time working with people like Rob, Mike, and others, reducing budgets, eliminating costs, refining, and doing any other things to try to be as fiscally responsible as possible. And in my now 17 years as superintendent, funding model in the state of Ohio does not offer opportunity for school districts to not pass levies. It is an impossibility. Now, having said that, the concept of pushing things off and utilizing dollars in ways that you stretch the budget so that over time pools go unfix, buses go unpurchased, fences don't get repaired, and other essential items necessary to educate kids are continuing to be pushed off. And some would say, you can do a unit cost, just decide what it costs to educate a student. I have two sons. We do not spend the same amount of money on those two sons. And neither does anyone in this room who has children. There is no unit price to educate a student. They are only going up. Inflationary costs, budgets, subsidies. I don't want to turn on a negative note. This is a positive school district, and I love this school district. We need to be careful about kicking a can down a road that will cost us an enormous amount to recover if we're not careful. And I didn't say that I don't like consolidation. I didn't say that here. So I don't want to be misinterpreted. That's what businesses do. They find ways to consolidate, they find ways to reduce costs, they find ways to stretch the dollar, they find ways to do what they do in the best ways possible at the least price. But I have to remind you that kids and I all have the same cost. And continuation of reduction of staff around them that serves them to pay electric bills and other bills is short-sighted.
Are we able to, do we need a motion to talk about a four-year amount for the levy, or how does that work?
Typically, we would bring the total resolution of necessity. I think that, I know that the board has been given this data, I don't know if the board has some ideas of what knowledge they would want to look at.
And I can tell you what I would want to look at. 4.9.
Alana, just an added thing, whatever, and maybe this is for Rob, too, I don't know, but any discussion about this, you know, also should include the fact that those two contracts are up next year, and how all of that factors in, and what that will look like.
And I think 4.9, I'll add the data that, that 4.9, that 4.9, which would get us through to fiscal year '25. I just should not touch. It got us through 12.2 million. That scenario was run with a million dollars in cuts annually, which is not often made. And so, to be honest with you, if you've been, what we were talking about, Katie, was the difference of $4 million in the forecast right now, that would, that would be a logical thing, that we would end up close to the 12.2 million at the end of 2025. And that is the scenario that it left operating in its own life. Which would not be a bad scenario. That would give us some time to look at the efficiency of the district in terms of building configurations, in terms of facilities. It's always good to step back and take a look at your operations and your facilities. Sometimes you come away with the, with the conclusion that, you know what, they are set, they are good. And sometimes you come away with the conclusion, you know what, this is going to be good educationally this week, and just want to save us a little bit of money. It's never, it's never a bad idea to step back and take a look at what you're doing just to make sure that it's still not like we're seeing here, or changing it strategically. And I think that this 4.9 levy would definitely give us a room to be able to do that and continue to see if there are more efficient configurations of this school district, or more of the shot likes to be made.
Can you rerun the reports? And then, and then could we talk about this at the July, have this on the July meeting? Or, I, I wouldn't be able to see numbers and anything before I say, unless you note anything.
I can see, like, that's a one point. Definitely, we could do that.
Are you comfortable with that?
I would have rather tried to move forward, just waiting till that meeting is very close to the deadline. It just, we've seen these numbers over and over again.
Can I make...
I just don't know that they're that different. You know, I get, like, you guys are number people, like, the, the broad scope of the numbers doesn't change enough for me to really see.
Can I make a suggestion? I know that we haven't started up yet, but to tomorrow night, you have a very important meeting, and you're going to be interviewing superintendent candidates. And what's going to happen after that meeting tomorrow night is we're going to have to add a meeting to higher, you can bring, and that probably will be the last week of June. So I could, if this is the board, we could, as we advertised that special meeting, we could also focus on what the consideration and obviously move forward is better, in our current values.
Alana, does that mean, so at the next one, if you present these numbers on the, the meeting that's not scheduled yet, would that mean at that meeting, we would have to take a vote on whether or not we agree to develop that resolution?
I would bring the resolution with the mileage open, and you could fill it in, and it would be your choice whether or not to see. Would be my recommendation. You can have as many meetings to talk about this levy as you would like the deadline to be, and you can be able to have the auditoriums, or not with July.
And I would wish to go out with any... That would be okay for reading, though. If you speak to the mic, it's really hard to hear you.
I'm okay reading till next week. Bye.
I have a question about the resolution, actually, that was something I meant to mention earlier. In the bullet point list where it says now therefore be as resolved, or as follows, if you want, you know, right there. That's very bullet point. It says school may not use race, socioeconomic, classroom gender, identity, etc., or the administrative, blah blah, evaluation program. Again, my problem is the vagueness in the doors that this opens, but, and I'm, I'm saying this with an educator head-on in higher education, so if one of y'all over there can correct me, if need be, please do. Evaluation program. Sometimes we collect scores on tests, and we separate them out, whether it's by gender, socioeconomic status, race, whatever, to identify gaps and close those educational gaps, which sometimes that means providing interventions, as I mentioned previously. So my question is, evaluation programs is stated in here. So again, we've got 22 policies that cover stuff like this, but this specifically says that. So in my mind, I'm thinking, can we not, not do that anymore so we won't be able to identify those educational gaps? It's a pretty, in fact, in higher, and I just had a, a very long retreat where, where we looked at the way these types of things related to a biology program, and they were able to close the educational gap once they identified them and, and showed that through data, which was kind of amazing. I assume that also happens in K through 12 education. But based on this, would that put us out of compliance with the state? Or is that a local thing where we get to decide if we're gonna try to identify gaps in educational, you know, of, of... try to identify gaps in educational, you know, among students? Do y'all, do either of y'all or any of y'all over there at those tables know? Is that a Ken Pence question?
From a hiring standpoint, I just want to look into it. I wouldn't, from an evaluation system standpoint. You know, we use the OPEC model for our teachers and our administrators, which, you know, there's no discriminatory practices in that. I have a concern on that end.
Yeah, no practices, but currently with this resolution, it says those evaluation things are not going to be used. Those things help us identify gaps. So that's, again, what I'm saying, this thing is very long and it's very vague and there are lots of holes like this. I don't think anybody in here wants to not be able to identify gaps in learning among groups of students. But that is a hole that is sticking out. And it's a pretty, I believe it's a pretty common evaluation tool. You can't, it's just interesting. Would it be noted that I noted that? It sounded like from the student feedbacks that they would like to see diversity day reinstated at Turpin High School and also added to the calendar for Anderson High School. So in the interest of being clear and open with our communication, I would like to put forth a motion so that we are, we are on record on how we feel about this in the district. I would like to make a motion to reinstate diversity day at Turpin High School for the 22, 23 school year and offer it at Anderson High School as well for the same school year.
We're going to see the same format as it was last year or is this open to?
The students, historically, the students plan it as student led.
And with the teacher involved, I didn't know if he, how much he has to do with it as well.
The teacher helps, I don't know exactly what he does, but it's student led, it's driven. I think it's very similar to any club where the students sort of decide what they would like to do and how to move forward. And they have an adult available to help them essentially.
Oh, if it's a club, does that mean it's generally after school?
Well, the motion that was passed at the meeting, it says zero resources. So that means they can't even have it after school on campus. Now, they can't have anything. They can't even use student email. That would be considered resourcing.
Well, I personally would be okay with it being like an after school program and if they wanted to have like an assembly of some kind to share that. I think there are ways that you can still celebrate and get to know each other. And I know I've talked to a few students, although I don't think I see any of them still here about this. I believe the best way to get to know people that are different than you is to spend time with people that are different than you. And that, that's broader than just race. It applies to various religions, socioeconomic backgrounds, any mental issues, on and on and on. I even told one of the kids, he recently had a Lebanese festival and I told him, you should come to it. You should come see, you know, what my personal background is like. It's incredibly entertaining. But I just was curious closely if it's just a black and white issue at these or did it expand to get to know people of a different background, not just race. With all due respect, can we motion we have a person second? That'd be okay.
So can I get a second?
I'll second so we can discuss.
Thank you.
And Anderson has a diversity club still, correct?
Do you have a microphone?
I can barely hear you.
And Anderson still has a diversity club, correct?
Correct.
Kyle straight against his head.
Right. Why can't Turpin form a diversity club?
Did you read the feedback from the students? Or hear those? It's, it's, there's also culture in their diversity. Those are different concepts. Related, sure. But it's not just about, oh, my grandma Madueva makes the mades every Christmas. It's a little deeper than that. I'm, my motion is not about what you're saying. I made a motion and it was seconded specifically to reinstate this student led event. So that specifically is what the motion, it's not whether or not we're going to have a club or whatever.
But they could still have a club like they do at Anderson and it could still be a way for them to expand their college in this area. I just want to make sure that what was voted on before does not prohibit that from happening in the future.
To be honest, I'm afraid that this resolution will prohibit even a club, now that I think about it, in the language. So that's also problematic because that then puts into play, I mean, every club. I think even Air has a club that's related to something similar. So it's so vague, it's over their interpretation and whoever decides to use it or interpret it and force it can. So they can say, so yeah, maybe that's even a bigger point of discussion. But it hasn't been voted on yet, so the motion is on the table.
I'm just, I'm trying to see if there is a way that we can allow, I don't know if we can do that way. Where we can maybe sidestep what was done at the last meeting and say, you know, you can have a diversity club, just like Anderson does. And, you know, there's resources that are used in clubs. I think that should be across the board.
So I, so again, I understand what you're saying.
You know, I'm just saying, I think you could get, I think you could get a lot more done if you had a club that met regularly to really get to know people that are different than you than just one day. I think that there could be a lot more done that way.
I understand what you're saying, Katie. The motion though is not that, so you have to vote no or yes on reinstate.
I seconded your motion so we could discuss it.
Right, but I, right, and I see what you're saying. I'm just saying like ultimately, there is a motion and specifically this. So I don't want to draw away from that because if we vote, it's not going to be about a club unless you put forth, if this motion fails and you put forth, you know, another motion, which you can do. I'm just trying to.
I understand. I just was trying to talk it out so that maybe we could get to, that means the motion that specifies where we're able to compromise and see that out.
Question.
So that was my thought process in talking it out because I still think that, and I wish, I wish some of those kids were still here, that the best way to get to know someone and to see other people. I understand that she's here. She wasn't one of the ladies I.
No, I was here.
You were, but CJ is not here, Owen's not here.
No, CJ is my kid.
I know.
He's not here anymore.
At least.
Went to go support Turpin former student playing with me.
I didn't mean it as in, he's just not physically here, the students that I talked to. I know you were standing outside as well when I was talking to everyone. But my point still stands that even if, even when you and I sat down and talked to each other outside, at first it didn't go very well. But I believe by the end of our discussion, we were able to sit and talk civilly with one another and get to know each other and how we felt about stuff. I believe that Leslie and I have been able to overcome some of that as well by sitting down and talking to one another. I've talked to many of you in the audience and the same thing happens. I, you know, I told people that I believe we agree on 90% of stuff. And maybe that number is a little high, but if you sit down and really talk to one another, you agree on so much more. And then we don't have this back and forth screaming and yelling and hour long meeting because we can't have a conversation. So I, I don't necessarily disagree that having a diversity day is not a good thing. There were questions in there that I have talked to and emailed people that even my own background, I was still getting upset about some of those questions and very emotional. So I don't know that some of that stuff is necessarily good for students who aren't as mature and able to handle some of those emotions. I don't know that those are necessarily the best place, even anonymously. So I just, I have some concerns.
I understand your concerns. It was opt-in, so like parent choice.
I know.
And to your, to your thoughts about can't you just have a club? I would point to the pages of feedback from the students that say, we want diversity day back, not a club. And that's why I put forth the motion specifically for this day. So Alana, just to be clear and to help the, and help the others understand the practice, because there was a motion, it was seconded, more discussion can continue, but there has to be a vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Rasmussen, does your motion offer any opportunity for continued development of the day and activities related to it?
I didn't think it would have my motion. But I.
Could we add it to a new motion?
I mean, it's, every year it's developed and adjusted. So I mean, I believe that's built in and it's, it's, it's like me changing my syllabus every semester because things change. The diversity day evolves each year and it's developed. So I sort of view that as just part of it, as part of the process of formulating a day.
I'm sure we're cool.
Well, you know, Bob, I appreciate that you said something. Thank you. And I think that you're at least open to clubs. But two things I want to point out. One, a club of anything like this could be derailed in a few minutes with this resolution. But two, I'm going to go back, not just to you, but to, I would challenge everyone on the board to say, this is what the students want. This is what they reported. This is what they came up, they said for the last two months, what their parents did. Again, opt-in, it is parent choice. And do we care about that? Do, do you all care that this is what the students and their parents that have the opt-in choice are saying they want? They want this. They also pay tax dollars in this community and they are voters and they are clearly engaged in showing up and have been for months. But that's an honest sincere question.
Do we want to move forward with voting on this?
Since the discussion is over, I think we shouldn't, I asked a question, but I guess that's not going to.
You can ask it again, I'm sorry.
You addressed it.
Can you restate your motion again, Leslie?
To reinstate diversity day at Turpin High School and to also add it to the Anderson High School calendar as well.
And it would remain and often, and parents, when they're with their option, their children and.
I, that's a great question. I assume yes, because that was reinstating it would, for me, means reinstating what they've done in the past and has been opt-in. And I don't think there's anything wrong either with providing the content to the parents. And I made this point back in May, the email complaints, I couldn't find a single one from parents that had opted in.
They're working. They're working, right, so maybe I got them separately than you, but they're working. And I think it had a lot to do with the content. And I think that what I would like to see is I would like to have the administrative team with the principals, because we have two high schools that should celebrate diversity. Never ever once that I didn't like it or I didn't agree with it. I just think that because of the content, it became a controversial issue and it brought a lot of different opinions to the head. And it needs to be kind of vetted through a little bit more. And I would like to see the administrative team get together and propose something else that would be agreeable to everybody. And for both high schools to participate in. And if both high school students can get together, that's even more diversity. So I don't see why, why we could, why they couldn't do that, why they wouldn't do that already.
Well, we need a vote because the motion was seconded, so. Is there any more discussion?
The last diversity day that we had, that never said you could not have it.
The motion, the motion.
Because of the material that was in it was because of why it was postponed or delayed or canceled or whatever word you want to use. So.
Linda, the motion that was passed said diversity day could not continue and it could not use taxpayer resources and so on. I don't have the specific language, but that was part of my problem was that these students can't even hold, even if, if you don't want it during school hours, they couldn't even hold it at school. They couldn't, couldn't even ask a teacher a question via email because that's a resource. So, you know, I'm, I don't even know how to respond because the motion did say all those things. So what, what you're, you're saying is not necessarily aligned with the motion that you voted on.
I'd still like to see the administrative team with a new superintendent try to work this out. Is something wrong with that?
Yes. Yes.
Are we ready for roll call?
Dr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Viv?
No.
Mrs. Jonas?
No.
Mrs. Hostel?
No.
I would like to, um, make a motion to approve the resolution to create a culture of kindness and equal opportunity for all students and staff.
I'm sorry, but we're, we're conducting a meeting, I'm sorry. I can talk to you after the meeting if you want to come on. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Sorry, but can I talk to you after the meeting, please?
Did you, you ran the motion through Bill, or legal, he reviewed it?
Yes, I did.
Where are we right now?
We're waiting for a second, two, three seconds. Mrs. Jonas, with the approval of the resolution, two, three seconds.
So now it's discussion time?
I'm glad you listened to the students.
It is discussion, just like what just happened. You make a motion, get seconded, discussions then vote. How it goes.
Is it possible to remove the anti-racism board ad?
I don't understand. It is possible to, um, amend the motion, just to be honest with you, so we have to vote on this amendment and if there are whole votes down for there each year to vote on what's on the floor and then if you would like to make an amendment to make a new motion, it's the cleanest way to do it. However, I want to be clear, if you could make an amendment, it's a subject of reunion.
I, I would like to know why we just talked about how this is what students say, this is what parents say, every boy and 500 company out there doing this, this is a global thing. And I point blank ask, do you care about what these kids had to say and what? And, yeah, we're here. I also want to know what happens to the Nabel Middle School mural that's dedicated to representation? Because as soon as this is approved, one person gets to say, oh, 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 that's a controversial topic. Not only that, this is a problem that society is in the process of debating. There's more than one solution. The issue might arouse strong emotions. That is all in this resolution. That's student artwork. So maybe call Bill and ask him what happens if we, based on this resolution, are forced to, um, cover up student art, how that's covered under the First Amendment. I mean, these are all, this is the problem with this resolution. It is the vagueness, it is the vagueness. And it is taking the position of being against racism and turning it into some political thing when literally we should all be able to agree that you should not behave that way. A student of color is in a Nabel Middle School and somebody writes the N-word on his locker, can he not discuss that? Can he not say that heard and report that? Because that falls under here. If I were the teacher taking that, I might be concerned even hearing that. That is literally the setup that is coming here. And it is saying that you, Bob, Linda, Sarah, Katie, that you don't care about what these students had to say, what their parents had to say about what they need and what they want, because this opens the door for that. Can you legally do that? Sure. It doesn't mean there aren't, it can't be, there aren't loopholes to, not even loopholes, some of it's so obviously illegal or could be twisted that way. And, um, and with, and actually not even twisted, but sound legal arguments. Just freaking, it's just, it's heartbreaking because it, it says you don't care to these people, to these kids that are sitting here in the meeting, the kids that are out there, the kid who was the person of color that, now, dang, can I tell my teachers that somebody called me the N-word? I don't know if I can. Or to the kid that might have two moms, like, it's a dangerous, sloppy and slippery slope in characterizing being anti-racist as, um, a bad thing. Frankly, it's mind-blowing. I don't know how people get hired at jobs when they say things like, oh yeah, being against racism is bad, like, no, and it, it just does not make sense. The title itself is an oxie moron. I will say that over and over. It is a simple fallacy and it wouldn't pass smut in any college class. It wouldn't.
Leslie, I'm sorry you feel that way, but I just want to reiterate to everyone, the controversial issues policy has been in the books since 2009. And what you are leaving out after those three pointers is these issues may be a part of instruction programming only when there is a balance to all sides.
So Sarah, this is what I'm talking about, the vagueness. That means the Holocaust, there are Holocaust deniers. A, a black woman that experiences racism and wants, and might happen to have a story about that in a book, well now we need a story that says, no, no, you're racist, you, you didn't experience racism. Don't, don't tell me that. That, that's the slippery slope. And if you don't understand that, I'm sorry, but, but that's what I'm saying, where it goes. When you say all that. And I want to make one, one very important point here. This, this policy has been in existence since 2009, but it did not include all of these other very specific things. That is the difference. So do not get confused or blindsided or whatever by, or tricked by the fact that that one policy has been on the books since 2009. It is the addition of all of these other things that make it problematic.
All across the country, Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Rasmussen?
Absolutely not.
Mrs. Stewart?
No.
Mrs. Hostel?
Get out of here. What is your resignation?
24 hours, you had that, 24 hours?
All right, let's get out of here.
Wow. Wow, bunch of racists, racist, racist. You're letting every diverse family in this community know they are not welcome here. That's what you're doing to this school district.
Shame on you.
Get out of under some people.
Move on to the reports to the board. 14.1, we have a new, a new report. Last month we brought a couple of bills. This month we have the dyslexia bill, House Hill 135, requires that it's for another post-public schools with schools to administer annual dyslexia screening beginning 22, 23 school year. Yeah, looking at that, I think, um, the update is that we're going to be happy to spend some money. Obviously, I think it's going to be $60,000 to fulfill this during 22, 23 school year. 14.2, Policy Committee Report. The Policy Committee Meeting was held on May 23rd. Administrative Team worked with the UNO rep on draft of nine policies of which you, um, can find on Board Doc, if you'd like to review those. Go to Board Doc and check them out, this is for the first review. 14.3, Union Resources Committee Report. 14.4, Forest Hills Foundation.
Um, my name is Ellen. I'm on board with the Forest Hills Foundation. Stacy can't be with you today and we could really use her positivity, um, tonight. But I was asked to stand here, um, to share formal values that the Forest Hills Foundation Board has. I believe they were all, are always part of our foundation's foundation. That was supposed to be a joke for my kid to make them cringe. But we felt it was important to write them down and share them. And I do believe these are values that we can all rally behind. One, we are student-centered. Students are at the heart of what we do and we create, we were created to be a resource for all students in all the schools. And we want students to thrive, um, not just survive. We are community-driven. We want to create a bridge between businesses, community partners and funders so that teachers and staff have what they need, all for the benefit of the students. We believe in innovation. We understand that education is fluid and ever-evolving and our goal is to offer funding to fuel the imaginative spark that will help Forest Hills stay at the top of the ranking in Ohio. And finally, integrity. Those that came before me exhibited stewardship for our donors and transparencies in our financials, our decisions and goals and we remain committed to that legacy. So if these values align with your values, then join us. Share your time, trust, talent and treasure. I want to thank everybody who's made this such a successful year. Never doubt small contributions. Almost $5,000 was raised with just $20,000 to honor your students. Thank you for remembering us during the holiday season and welcome to the almost 2,000 new donors. You are not alone. You share similar values and you care about our students. Your generosity gives me hope for this community. We do great things when we click kids first. So two last things and then you guys can go. One, follow us. Let us be a ray of sunshine in your doom scrolling on social media. And get out your phones if they're not already and save the date for some fun events that will bring this community together.
Thank you. 15.0, Executive Session.
Appreciate the live, I disclose section 121.22D, 3D, I am a member during the executive session to meet with Board Legal Counselors to discuss the students involving the Board and/or school district, that are subject to pen, subject to pending or imminent court action.
Then we go for their votes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yeah.
Dr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostel?
Yes.
We will, uh, we will not be voting on anything this evening, so we will resume to the next discussion and we'll be gone for the evening. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.